Alright folks, well we're starting off without anybody in the conference. And so what we're gonna do is I'll just walk through Fattado's grammar. And I'm gonna go lesson by lesson pointing out the things that you'll want to make sure you have down for the midterm. It's not gonna be everything in every lesson or chapter, but what it's gonna be is the information that I'm confident will be on the midterm and that you'll want to make sure that you've mastered before you take it. So, starting with lesson one here, obviously you need to know the alphabet. If you don't know the alphabet, you won't be able to read anything. Specifically within the alphabet, things that you'll need to know are which letters are the guterels? You'll need to know your final forms as well, but let me see here, uh, I guess that, oh, here we go. Guterels plus reish. So olive, heh, chet, and ayin, you'll need to know that those are the gutterels. Reish is associated with the gutterels because reish does not take a dageish, just like the gutterels don't take a dageish. But the gutterels, there are four, are only olive, heh, chet, and ayin. So make sure that you know that. Also, you'll wanna make sure that you know how the letters are pronounced with and without the dageish. Let's see, that's actually up here. So the bait, the kaf, and the pey each make a different sound when they lose or when they lack the dageish. Bait makes the v sound, kaf makes the chah-cha sound like chet, and then pay makes the f-f-f-f, f sound. Alright, um, he notes here that he does not distinguish between the pronunciation of the gimel bala and tav with and without the dageish, some grammars do, but you won't need to worry about that. Alright, uh, moving on, we'll look at vowels. Here's the most important information that you need to know about vowels. First of all, you need to know which vowels are the short vowels. That's absolutely probably the most important piece of information. The short vowels, there are five. Those are patach, segel, hirik, komets, katuf, and kibbutz. Those are your five short vowels. Know those five. Know that the patach makes an a sound, the segel makes an e sound, the hirik makes an i sound, the komets katuf makes an o sound, and the kibbutz makes the u sound. That's what you need to know about those. Uh, it will also be helpful for you to have consistent pronunciation of each of the vowels. Um, but if you pronounce patach as aw, like in father, versus ah, like in cat, that's not gonna make too much of a difference for you. You just need to know it makes an a sound, and that should, um, that should get you far enough on the midterm. Alright, then let's look over here at lesson three. The primary things you need to know from lesson three are the difference between silent and vocal shavah, and the difference between weak and strong dageish. And for these, I recommend taking a look at the flow charts. Uh, these are linked back in, I think there are announcements for these. Actually, let's pull that up here. If you come over here to the course, you should be able to, in announcements, scroll down here, shortcuts for shavah and dageish. Uh, and so here, you can find, if you click here, you'll find the shavah flow chart. And then if you click here, you'll find the dageish flow chart. Okay, uh, these videos are me kind of going over the practice, uh, questions, exercises for shavah and for dageish, so you can watch those as well for more help. But you need to know, if you're going to boil this down to one rule each, the rule for dageish is the sound before the dageish letter a consonant sound or a vowel sound. Basically, if the dageish has a vowel before it and after it, that means it's strong enough to carry both vowels. That makes it a strong dageish. But a weak dageish is only strong enough to carry its own vowel. So that indicates that the sound before the weak dageish is a consonant. Is the sound before the dageish letter a consonant? That makes it weak. Or is the sound before a dageish letter a vowel? That makes it strong. Alright, when it comes to the shavah, the main rule that you wanna ask yourself here is this. Is there a short vowel immediately preceding the shavah? If there is, it's silent. Short is silent. Is there a short vowel immediately preceding the shavah? If no, then it's vocal. This rule is going to get you through every single question as long as you remember one thing. This is the one thing that you need to remember. When we go back to our lesson, our practice questions on dageish, remember keit talu, okay? Is the shavah immediately preceded by a short vowel? It looks like it, but it's not because you have to remember that this dageish represents another tet and a silent shavah. If you remember that, then you'll be able to answer this question. Is the shavah immediately preceded by a short vowel? No, because it's preceded by the intervening silent shavah. Since it's no, that means this is vocal, okay? But this is gonna trip you up if you don't take the time to refresh your memory on this. If you don't remember what the dageish represents here, this will trip you up, okay? So make sure you understand that. If you have questions, feel free to send them to me. But that's the one place where you're gonna get tripped up, okay? So shavah, vocal and silent, dageish, strong and weak, make sure you know how to tell the difference between the two. Lesson four, nouns. This is what you need to know for the most part. This is the most important information in this chapter. For the nouns, you need to know, um, that the hierochymo mem ending usually indicates masculine plural. There are irregular nouns, I know that. There are some times when you'll have hierochymo mem, for example, nashim. Nashim means women. That is not a masculine plural noun, that is a feminine plural noun, even though it looks like it has the masculine plural ending, but that's irregular. Those are rare, those are not common. What this is supposed to give you is an idea for a noun that you haven't seen before. When you come across it, if it has a hierochymo mem, try taking that off and seeing if the resulting word is in your dictionary, your lexicon. When you see a holim bov tav, try taking that off and adding the komateh back in, okay? But you need to know that hierochymo mem often indicates masculine plural, holim bov tav often indicates feminine plural, and komateh often indicates singular, uh, feminine singular. Alright, if you know those, that's most of what you need to know from lesson four. Of course, you should also know the dual form, the aim ending. Uh, anytime you have this aim ending, the patach, yod, hirik, mem, understand that the accent will be right above that patach. So this gets pronounced as one syllable, even though there's two vowels, it becomes a diphthong, aim. So this would be yomaim, two days. Yad becomes yadaim, two hands. Alright, then we'll go to lesson five. For pronouns, it's pretty straightforward. As long as you memorize the pronouns as part of your vocabulary, you know what you need to know. There's not much else you need to do. Just make sure you know that when you see a specific pronoun in Hebrew, make sure you can translate it properly. There are still people that are getting mixed up on who versus he. Remember, who is he, he is she. Who is he, he is she. If you can remember that, that should help you distinguish them.
My apologies.
Sorry, Siri's getting nosey again. Alright, when it comes to the second person, remember, a ta is bulkier, at is skinnier, okay? It's smaller. So the masculine form is the bulkier form, the feminine form is the skinnier form. When it comes to the plural, remember, the mem indicates masculine. The n, the noon, you know, we can't really associate that with feminine very easily, but the mem indicates masculine, therefore the noon indicates feminine, okay? And that's the same up here in the third person plural. Hey ma, hey ma, ma-ma-mem, that indicates masculine. Hey na indicates feminine. Alright, so those pronouns, if you know them, there's not much grammar to it. It's mostly just memorizing them, which is why Fattado presented these as the vocabulary words in the previous lesson. Alright, so if you know your pronouns, you should be good there. When it comes to the definite article, just remember this. There are four different forms that the definite article will take. The basic form is heh patach dageish, okay? That's the basic form, heh patach dageish. But what happens when you attach the definite article to a letter that can't take a dageish, like a gutterel or reish? What happens there is one of three things. In front of a heh or a chet that is accented, a heh or a chet that is accented, let's see. Kind of, uh, I guess we'll call it heh or chet in general. There's an exception in the fourth form, but we'll call it heh or chet in general. So if you've got the definite article in front of a heh or a chet, you should expect it to just have the patach. It's not gonna have the dageish, and it's not gonna link them in front of a heh or a chet. Alright, however, if you get the definite article in front of an olive, an ayin, or a reish, those can't take the dageish either, but those will link them. So form one is heh patach dageish, form two is simply heh patach. Heh patach with a heh, heh patach with a chet. Form three is heh komets. Heh komets with an olive, heh komets with an ayin, heh komets with a reish. And then you've got the, um, heh komets, chet komets, ayin komets situation. In these situations, you're going to have the heh segel. So if you see a heh segel, chet komets, heh segel, heh komets, or heh segel, ayin komets, that is going to be your definite article as well. Those are your four forms. Heh patach dageish, heh patach, heh komets, and heh segel. That's what you need to know from lesson five. Lesson six. For this lesson, primarily what you need to have memorized is this paradigm from 6:10, just this leftmost column, okay? Memorize this leftmost column. These other two columns here are just, the middle two are showing you the connection between the verb form and the corresponding pronoun. Of course, that correspondence only occurs in some of the forms, not all of them. The third person doesn't really follow that very well. But, uh, you need to know this column here, and you need to be able to associate. It's great if you can tell me that, you know, katal nu is one CP, but I would rather you be able to just give me the English pronoun that goes with katal nu. Memorize i with nu. Because if you memorize one CP, you then have to remember, okay, what is the English pronoun for one CP? And you can get there, but I just think it's shorter to associate the nu suffix with i. Alright, now, I will show you something. I don't think I showed this with the entire class, um, but, let's see here. I may have. Now, I don't recommend memorize anymore because especially on the mobile app, they've disabled the primary feature, uh, the primary reason why I recommended it. And so it's kind of useless now, but on the desktop version, on the online version, you can still get that feature, which is the memory aids. Uh, you have to change something in your settings to get it, uh, which I guess I might as well just show you what that is now. So if you've got a memorize account, you go into your settings, uh, let's see here. I uncheck the beta, okay? Um, they're rolling out new experiences. One of those new experiences is getting rid of the memory aids, which is the only reason I use memorize. So I uncheck that, and I'm not sure what the alpha is, is doing, but if you've unchecked the beta and the alpha, you should have access to the memory aids. Alright, so, uh, in courses, and you can just search for this probably. If you search for Hebrew grammar, um, I guess you'll have to find the one that's created by Daniel Bruski, which may take some searching. Maybe it's better to just search by my username, Daniel Bruski, one word. Uh-oh, maybe I haven't published it, maybe it's private. It might be private, because the whole reason for creating it was just to show an example. Um, so let me just go to my courses. It's probably not public yet. Let me see if I can do that. Let's see here. Well, I might have to look into how to make it public because, there we go. Alright, um, I guess I still have to do something on here to... There we go, okay. So again, it is incomplete. Uh, I'm still working on it, but you can at least, you should be able to search for it now. That's just if you wanna use it, you know, don't feel, this is just, you know, all of this is just, uh, icing on the cake. Uh, oh boy. Back to course. I think my computer's having a hard time. There we go, okay. And so now, if you go to courses, and you search for Hebrew grammar. Oh yeah, I probably just need to search for my name. Nope, still not there. Okay, well, I'm not sure what the deal is, but I can send you a link if you, uh, if you send me an email or something, I'm not sure what the deal is. The point of bringing it up is to show you what I would do for the CalPerfect. If you're having trouble, and I mean, you have got to master these endings. You have got to master these to the point where as soon as you see it, you know what the parsing is, where at least you can immediately translate it. Alright, and so this is what I would recommend doing. How I did this when I was learning Hebrew was different. I just wrote the paradigm out a hundred times. I don't know if it was a hundred, but I wrote it out over and over and over again until I had it memorized. The problem is, that helps me memorize the paradigm, but it doesn't help me memorize how to translate a particular verb form. If you do it this way, so basically on one side of the card, for 3MS, there is no suffix, so I just put no suffix. But on one side of your card, write komateh, tav komets, tav shavah, tav hierochymo, shurich, uh, tav segel mem, tav segel noon, noon shurich. Write these on one side of a card each, and then on the back, write the English pronoun you would use to translate it. And that way, you can really drill yourself on, when I see a ta. Now, I'll, I'll point out, you'll note that the tavs here, they don't have the, uh, dageish in them. That's because, as we'll learn, you know, later on, I mean, this might even be next semester. Um, the only time they have the dageish is when they're preceded by a silent shavah, okay? They won't always be preceded by a silent shavah. And if they're not, then they're not gonna have the, the dageish there. So just memorize the tav and the vowels, um, rather than, you know, I don't want you to be thrown off if you see tav komets without the dageish. That still is the same suffix. The only reason, reason that dageish pops in is because of a gacafat letter will have the weak dageish when it's preceded by a consonantal sound, okay? But anyways, this is the idea here is, you know, get, I guess, nine cards, and on each card, write one of these suffixes, and then on the back of it, write the English pronoun. That way, when you see t, you'll think i, okay? So the way that this works is if I go in here to learn these forms, um, it's gonna give me a chance to learn it. Nu means we. I can add a memory device if I want to. I'd probably add something like, uh, I should just add a picture here, but I don't have a picture. So I'm just going to do this. Um, I think it is, oops. Olive, I think it's hatuf patach. Oh, I think that's how you spell anachnu, I'll have to double check that. Uh, and actually what I'll do is I'll put a space here, anachnu, okay? So nu suffix, anachnu means we. So when I see nu, I think anachnu, which means we. Alright, um, so that's gonna be the memory device that I have. So I've learned that one. Now, some of these I've already learned, so now it's gonna quiz me. Ten, how do you translate the ten suffix? Well, that's gonna be u feminine plural. Alright, u masculine plural, how would you write that? Well, uh, I would do tav segel mem. Alright, we, which one is we? Again, nu. How would you write out the feminine plural? That's gonna be tav segel noon. Nu, how do you translate that? That's gonna be we. Ten, how do you translate that? That's gonna be u feminine plural. And then they, they is gonna be just a shurich, okay? We, what's that gonna be, uh, sorry, noon, vav shurich. Shurich is they. Tem is gonna be u masculine plural. They, again, shurich. Nu, it's gonna be we. And so it's gonna drill you with some spaced repetition here. They is gonna be vav dageish for shurich, um, so that it helps you commit this to memory. Uh, u feminine plural is ten, we is gonna be nu. U masculine plural is gonna be tem, u feminine plural tav segel noon. U masculine plural is tav segel mem. We is gonna be noon, vav dageish for shurich. There you go, session complete. So, uh, that's kind of how I would recommend drilling. Again, you don't need to do this on a computer. You can just do this with your own flashcards that you make. But you guys have got to master these suffixes before we move on to the imperfect, otherwise you'll get really bogged down. If you're having any trouble, if you've tried this, and you're still having trouble with these suffixes, let me know. I'll try to come up with a way to help you, because you've just got to master it before we move on. Alright, uh, so let's go back to the grammar here. Alright, so that's really what you need to know from the CalPerfect, okay? Um, obviously, translation wise, you need to know that CalPerfect refers to simple, completed action, which is why we use the simple past tense in English. When you have a state of verb, state of verbs, remember, they could have, instead of a cow, I'm sorry, instead of a, um, komets patach pattern, state of verbs like kaved might have a komets seire pattern. Some can even have a komets holam pattern, alright? But those state of verbs, those because of the meaning of the verb, those can sometimes be translated as present tense states. So kaved, he is heavy, rather than he was heavy, but you could use either translation. Um, to be on the safe side, until you learn more about verbs. If it's in the CalPerfect, just translate it simple past tense. That's going to be the most reliable approach for you to take. Until you learn more about when to use future and present and past, just stick to perfect is past tense in English. Again, understand that you're gonna learn more later, but keep it as simple as you can right now. Alright, sentences with verbs. Um, I will probably clip this segment from the video and post it separately, because we have a lot of students that are still struggling with this. And they're struggling with translating Hebrew sentences because you're not going through the two-stage process of translation. What a lot of students are doing, and I'll come down here to a practice item. Let's go to a long, complex sentence, like number... Let's just do number one to start with here, okay? Alright, so sentence number one here. The two stages of translation are stage one is analyzing the Hebrew word, which you guys are doing. You're doing great at that, alright? But that's just stage one. Stage one, analyze the Hebrew words. Don't get bogged down when there's a bunch of words, just go one at a time. Don't get bogged down when there's a bunch of stuff you don't recognize. Just one word at a time, go through the steps of parsing to try to figure out what you're looking at. Don't get overwhelmed by everything, just go one word at a time. Alright, so first word, we've got shalach. Even if I don't know the root shalach, I see a three-letter word with a patach komet, or sorry, with a komets patach pattern, and that tells me CalPerfect 3MS. Alright, so shalach means sent, okay? Now, I used to say shalach means he sent. I'm not doing that anymore, because some of you are getting confused in a sentence like this, where you're going to incorporate he into the English translation. That's gonna cause problems for you. Shalach means sent, okay? It, the, the root means to send, but the CalPerfect form is simple past tense. Alright, so we're gonna gloss this with sent. We're gonna note what part of speech it is. It's a verb, okay? What is the function of this? Well, it's the only verb we have, so it's gonna be the main action of the sentence. Alright, we've parsed it, CalPerfect 3MS, we've glossed it, sent. We've noted that it's a verb and that it's the main action. There's really nothing else for us to do with this. So move on to the next word, hamelach. Hamelach, I see a heh, I think, hey, this might be a definite article. So I've got, I, I confirm that by seeing the heh patach dageish. Anytime you see heh patach dageish at the beginning of a Hebrew word, 95% chance it's gonna be the definite article, if not more, okay? If I take off the heh patach dageish, I should have a Hebrew word, melech. Melech, I learned, means king. Alright, so we've got the king. We've parsed this out as masculine singular. We've noted the definite article. The gloss for melech is gonna be king, so this word will be the king. We'll also note that this is a noun, and then we have to ask ourselves, what function does this noun have in the sentence? So far, we've learned three functions that a Hebrew noun can have in a sentence. It can serve as the subject. It can serve as the direct object of the verb, that is, the thing that the verb is being done to. In this case, the direct object would be the thing that is sent, whereas the subject would be the thing that is sending. Or the third function that we've learned for a noun in a Hebrew sentence is the object of a preposition. We don't have a preposition here, so it can't be that. Could it be the direct object? Well, a king could be sent, so that works. Uh, does it, well, let's, let's stop. Uh, since it is definite, if it were the direct object, it would have the definite direct object marker, which it does not. In fact, there's another noun that does have the definite direct object marker. So that tells us right away, this is almost certainly not the direct object. So if it's not the object of the preposition, and it's not the direct object, there's only one more function that it can have, and that's subject. But if it's going to be the subject, it has to agree with the verb and gender and number. The verb is masculine singular, so this noun, if it is the subject, has to be masculine singular as well. Sure enough, it is. So certainly, hamelach is the subject of the verb here, so we're gonna note that as well. We've got a masculine singular noun functioning as the subject, and we're gonna translate it as the king. There's nothing else for us to do with this word, so we're gonna move on. Et ka navi. The first thing I note is the et particle here. This is marking this definite noun as the direct object of the verb. So I know that I have a noun and that it's functioning as the direct object. Now I need to parse it out and translate it. I've got ha navi, uh, I've got a heh at the beginning, so a heh, it might be the definite article. I can confirm that by seeing the heh patach dageish. If I take that heh patach dageish off, I'm left with navi, which is a Hebrew word that I know. It's the word prophet. So this would be translated as the prophet. So I've identified this as a noun functioning as the direct object of the verb. I've parsed it as masculine singular, and I've translated it as the prophet. There's nothing left for me to do here. I have analyzed every single word in this Hebrew sentence. The problem is, some of you are stopping there and adding a period. So you've got, he sent, the king, the prophet, period. And so your sentence ends up being, sorry. Your sentence ends up being, he, oops, go back to English. He sent, because that's what shalach means, the prophet, or sorry, the king. He sent the king, because that's what hamelach means, and the prophet, because that's what et ha navi means. And then you put a period there, and you think you're done. You're not done, you've only done the first stage. Now you need to do the second stage, which is you ask how would English build this sentence? Because if you stop here, you've got a problem. If you stop here, what's your subject? He. Well, he is not your subject in the Hebrew sentence. The king was your subject. In this English sentence, what function does the king have? If you say he sent the king the prophet, the king ends up being the indirect object. That's not what the Hebrew sentence says. The Hebrew sentence has the king as the subject. Now, you know, the prophet does end up being the direct object in both, which is good, but this sentence means something different than what the Hebrew sentence is saying, okay? In this sentence, the prophet is being sent to a king. And the Hebrew sentence, the king is the one sending the prophet. Those have two different meanings. This is not an English translation of the Hebrew sentence. So how do we get an English translation of the Hebrew sentence? Well, the first thing that we have to do is we look at our sentence, and then we ask our buddy English, hey, English, what do you want first in order to build your sentence? English says, give me the subject first. Alright, so we come over here and we say, which one was our subject again? That was hamelach. How did we translate this? The king. Alright, grab the king and bring it over here, the king. Alright, English, what do you want after the subject? English says, give me the verb next. So we come back to our Hebrew, and we find the verb. Which one was the verb? Shalach. How did we translate that? Sent. Again, if you gloss this as he sent, that he needs to be in parentheses, because you're not gonna use he if you have a subject in English. Excuse me, the only reason why we incorporate he in here is in the situation where the Hebrew doesn't have a subject, because English demands a subject of some sort. So we'll just use the pronoun in that case. But we don't use the pronoun here, because we've got an explicit subject in Hebrew. The king, bring the verb over, sent, the king sent. Alright, English, what do you want after the verb? Give me the direct object. We come back to our Hebrew sentence, which one was our direct object? Et ha navi, alright? How did we translate this? The prophet. So we bring the prophet over. The king sent the prophet. Put a period in, you're done. That's how you translate a sentence in Hebrew, okay? So what you need to do is stage one, you need to analyze every Hebrew word, like you guys have been doing. Most of you have been doing great at that, okay? But you can't stop there, because if you do, you get this sentence. He sent the king the prophet. This is not a correct translation. The correct translation is, the king sent the prophet. And the only way you're gonna end up with this sentence, instead of this sentence, is if you go through stage two, asking, how do I build this sentence in English? English, what do you want first? He wants the subject. What do you want after the subject? It wants the verb. What do you want after the verb? Then it takes the direct object, okay? That's what you have to do if you're gonna translate the Hebrew into an English sentence. Alright, so what happens in the situation like we've had hamelach here? What if our Hebrew sentence doesn't have an explicit subject like that? Let's go down here to, I guess the only good example, and it's not great. Let's try, ah, we don't want the negatives. Alright, we'll use this one, even though I don't like Fattado's translation, but we'll, we'll use, uh, number five here. Alright, so we've got et ha oritz shamar nu. Alright, again, word by word, start with the first word. We anticipate, but we don't demand that that first word is going to be a verb. But we see et here, and we know we don't have a verb. Et marks the definite direct object. Sure enough, we see a definite article after it, and it's on oritz, okay? Now, oritz is not the word we learned, we learned eretz. I discussed this a little bit, this is a unique phenomenon. I think it has to do with the fact that eretz is accented on the olive, and that's why it shifts to match the, um, the komets here. Um, I think I remember learning that Hebrew doesn't like the ah-eh pattern, the komets segel pattern, but I may be wrong about that. There's some obscure rule explaining why this shifts to a komets. Don't worry too much about it, you're not gonna have to compose Hebrew. You just need to recognize, again, when you're reading, look at the letters first. Olive, reish, sadeh, that should remind you of eretz. So if we take off the definite article, we get land. If we translate it with the definite article, we get the land, alright? This is a noun, how is it functioning? Well, the definite direct object marker tells us that it is the direct object of the verb. It is feminine singular. I know eretz looks masculine, because it doesn't have an ending, specifically a komateh ending, but eretz is feminine.[1444.96] but eretz is feminine, alright? So we've parsed it, we've identified it as a noun, we've identified it as the direct object. We've translated it, the earth or the land, there's nothing else for us to do. Let's move on to the next word. The next word, this is our verb. We can tell because we see a Cal perfect one CP suffix on a three-letter root. We see the comments patach pattern in the root. So this is a good giveaway that we've got a verb here. So let's first parse the verb. Again, we said it was Cal perfect one CP. Now let's figure out the meaning of the root. Shamar means to guard or to keep watch. So if we were going to translate this in the Cal perfect, this would be something like guarded. Guarded or kept watch, alright? Again, if you're gonna say I guarded or I kept watch, keep that I in parentheses. But you don't even need to add it yet, alright? So we have parsed the word, we've identified it as a verb. It's the only verb in the sentence, so it's gonna be the main action of the sentence. And we have glossed it as guarded. Alright, now, we're done with stage one, but we don't just put a period there. We don't just say, the earth guarded. That doesn't work. What we do now is we go to stage two, we ask how would English build this sentence? And so, English, what do you want first in your sentence? I want the subject, okay? So we come back over here and we look for our subject. Unfortunately, there is no subject in this Hebrew sentence. It has a direct object and it has a verb. So what do we do? This is why we've been putting I in parentheses here. We have to infer the subject from the form of the verb. Shemarnu is only going to be used, this form is only going to be used when the subject is first common plural. So what is the first common plural pronoun in English? That's we. And that's why, when you create these flashcards for the suffixes, you really should create these, the translation we here instead of like one CP, so that when you see nu, you're thinking we in your mind. Alright, so since we don't have a subject in Hebrew, we have to provide, we have to infer the appropriate English pronoun, subject, subject pronoun. Alright, so we bring down we, alright? We guarded the land. Well, I just jumped ahead, but we, okay? So we bring down we. Now, English, what do you want after the subject? Give me the verb, okay? We decided that shemarnu is the verb. What did shemarnu translate as? Guarded, alright? So let's bring guarded down. We guarded. Alright, English, what do you want after the verb? Give me the direct object. We translated the direct object as the land or the earth. So now we'll bring that down. The land. We guarded the land, you can put your period in there. Ignore this parenthetical information. The only reason why he puts this here is because the definite direct object is fronted in the sentence. It's out of its typical location. Normally, the direct object is going to follow the verb. And if there is a subject, there's a bird outside my window that's really getting on my nerves here. It's causing my wife to crack up, and that's causing me to crack up. Typically, the direct object is going to follow the verb, and if there's a subject, the direct object will typically follow the subject as well. Since we don't have a subject, we would expect the verb to come first and then the direct object. But that's not what happens. For some reason, the author has fronted the direct object, which probably implies some sort of emphasis. There are other reasons for fronting the direct object, but that's probably what it indicates. And so if we want to bring that out in our sentence, I don't recommend doing it. I recommend bringing this out in commentary or something like that. But the effect that fronting this would have would be to emphasize that what we're really concerned about, the topic, if you will, of the sentence, is the land. We guarded the land. That's what the attention is on in this sentence. The attention is on the land. We guarded the land, not something else. What we guarded was the land. And so that's why he puts the parenthetical note. We guarded the land, not something else like the city, alright? So you guys certainly should not be providing information like this in your translation. The only reason he's doing it is pointing out that the land is fronted here, and so there's some sort of emphasis going on. I'm gonna stop there, I'm not gonna review the exercises from lesson seven, but I wanted to give you a couple examples of translation here, going through that two-stage process where first, you do analyze the Hebrew sentence, which again, you guys have been doing well. But you can't stop there, you can't just put a period there and think you're done. You now have to ask, how would English communicate this? How would English build this sentence? English is gonna start with a subject, and it must have a subject. But you're not gonna use a subject noun and a subject pronoun. Don't overlap, don't translate sentence one here as, the king, he sent the prophet. And certainly don't translate it as, he sent the king the prophet, we already talked about that. But don't double your pronoun with an explicit subject. It's just the king sent, not the king he sent, alright? Similarly, when you don't have a subject in Hebrew, you have to come up with one in English. And so the safest subject to come up with is the pronoun that corresponds to the verb form. Here, the one CP pronoun corresponds to the one CP verb form, so we have to supply the one CP pronoun, which is we. But again, you have to start with your subject in English, then bring in your verb, then bring in your direct object. Word order is much more flexible in Hebrew. It is not flexible in English. If we, you know, if we mix this sentence up and we say guarded the land we, or the land guarded we, or the land we guarded, that's not the same meaning. If we were to say the land we guarded, that's not even a complete sentence in English. So again, simple rule. In order to have an English translation, it must be both a translation and it must be English. If your English translation is not English, if it's not how English speaks, it's not an English translation, keep that in mind. Alright, moving on from lesson seven, lesson eight. I will tell you this, you will be tested directly on nothing in chapter eight, or lesson eight, rather. Don't think this information isn't important, but the whole purpose of this lesson is to explain what's going on with vowel changes. Again, we're not asking you to compose Hebrew, and so you don't need to memorize these rules. But when you read a sentence in Hebrew and you notice that the vowels are not what you expect them to be, this is the information that's gonna help you understand why. Maybe you don't care why the vowels are different than you expect, okay? Then you don't need this information, as long as you can still properly translate. But this information here is to explain why changes take place. Again, if we were requiring you to compose Hebrew, this would be much more essential. But since we're only requiring you to read, this information is just explanatory. That means you're not going to be asked, davar, which syllable is propretonic? You're not gonna be asked that. We're not going to give you the question, what type of, sorry, what type of vowel will not reduce to a shavah? Okay, and multiple choice or whatever, we're not gonna ask you that, alright? Know this information, it's helpful. But if you're trying to study for the exam, I would certainly deprioritize lesson eight. Deprioritizing those will give you more time to focus on stuff that you'll actually be quizzed on. It doesn't mean this information is not important, it just means it's not gonna be on the midterm. Lesson nine, okay? This was the last lesson that we went over. I should probably spend a little bit more time on this because we haven't really covered it in a video conference. But there are really two things that I'm gonna emphasize, I should say three, because we'll talk about it with the prepositions and then we'll talk about it with the vav. Alright, so what you need to know, similar to the definite article, prepositions can come with many different vowels, as can the vav conjunction, that it can come in many forms. That's how I should say it. The definite article can come in four different forms. Hay patach dogesh, hay patach, hay comments, hay segel. So these inseparable prepositions can come in many forms as well. The independent prepositions aren't gonna give you much trouble, especially just more vocabulary words, alright? But the inseparable prepositions will give you trouble in the fact that the vowels are going to change for them for a variety of reasons. The primary reasons why the vowels of the inseparable prepositions will change is if they are connected to specific types of letters and vowels. So for example, if you were to connect the bait preposition with a shavah to a word that begins with a shavah, then we run into this, we end up breaking this rule that says, a Hebrew word cannot begin with two consecutive shavahs, alright? And so if it did, if that happened, if you add a bait shavah next to a noon shavah, the initial shavah is going to kind of expand into a hiric, alright? So you can think of it as when you get two shavahs in a row, one dot drops, you know? And so you end up with hiric shavah instead of shavah shavah, alright? Another situation why you might get something other than a shavah in the inseparable preposition is if the word begins with a hatef vowel. In that case, the dot doesn't drop off the shavah, instead, the preposition uses the corresponding short vowel. So what is the corresponding short vowel of hatef patach? It's in the name, patach. What's the corresponding short vowel of hatef segel? It's in the name, segel. What's the corresponding short vowel of hatef comments? It's comments katuf, that gets a little tricky there, but obviously, they look the same. You know, you take the vowel that was added to the shavah to make the hatef vowel, and you put it under the preposition. The reason why this gets tricky is because when you add the preposition to a word with a definite article, the preposition, it covers over the hay of the definite article, and it leaves the definite article vowel exposed. And so you might say, well, I've got a bait patach. Patach is usually one sign of the definite article. So how do I know whether or not the definite article is under this bait? Well, here's how you know. When you have a definite article in front of an olif, the definite article does not use the patach vowel. In front of an olif, the patach lengthens to a comments. And so if this was bait comments olif, then sure, you would probably have the definite article here. But that's not what you have, you have bait patach olif, which is not a sign of the definite article. Well then, why is it patach? It's patach because Hebrew doesn't wanna have a shavah next to a hatef vowel. And so instead, the shavah is going to assimilate into the corresponding short vowel. You get down here, you gotta bait segel. Well, isn't segel one of the definite article vowels? It's a rare one, but when you've got a definite article in front of a hay comments, chet comments, or ayin comments, you're going to get a segel in the definite article. Well, the problem is, when you look here, you don't have a hay chet or ayin comments, you have an olif. We already talked about how the definite article vowel for an olif is gonna be comments. So it doesn't apply here. Okay, well, what about this one? Okay, well, it's got a little squarely too, because we no longer have an olif. So again, when you see that the preposition vowel doesn't match what the definite article would be for the next letter, you know, for a chet here, you would expect there to be either a patach, or if it was chet comments, you would expect it to be a segel, and that's not what you've got. So you have to do a little bit of detective work when it comes to some of these. Look at the preposition and look at its vowel, and ask yourself, why is the preposition taking this vowel? Is it because the definite article is under it? Or is it for one of these other reasons, like the segel rule, or I'm sorry, the shavah rule, or something like that? That's what you need to think through. Now, this is another situation where, when you've got a hatef segel under an olif, it's very specific, okay? But it happens frequently with the word Elohim, so that's why they want you to know it. This isn't just with the lamed preposition, this is with the bait preposition and the kauf preposition. He's just giving you the example. So if it were in God, it would be be lohim. If it were as God or like God, it would be ke lohim, alright? But when you have the bait preposition on Elohim and some other words that begin with olif hatef segel, it's going to lengthen to a sereh there, alright? What else do we need to know? That's what we covered already. Okay, so now let's talk about the min preposition. And to explain this, I'm gonna go to the exercises here. The issue with the min preposition is what we call an assimilated noon. The assimilated noon is the phenomenon in Hebrew where anytime you have a noon between two consonants without its own vowel, it gets a little skittish, okay? It doesn't like to be squished between two consonants without its own vowel. One way to think of it, in the season that we're in, is that noon is a little bit of a germaphobe, alright? So when you have noon here, and it has the social distance of the makafe, it's cool, it can handle it. But when you get into a situation where min, wow, this is, oh boy. The way my grammar has, the way that my textbook here has formatted this is backwards. That's gonna cause a problem, I hope this is just in mine and not in yours. But let's pull up our Word document again here. Alright? Let's do min. We'll just do men, and then we'll do, what was the noun? Zavach. Good enough. Alright, min, oops. Oh boy. Min, this isn't gonna work the way I want it to. Alright, we'll just do spaces. Oh brother. Alright, min, and then we'll go with zavach. Alright? So there's a couple things that happen. First of all, in this situation, because there's no definite article, min's gonna get up close and personal, it's gonna sandwich with zavach, they're gonna combine. But noon sees what's going on, and noon doesn't like it. Noon knows that if it doesn't have the social distance of the makafe here, it might get the virus. And so noon is gonna run and hide. That's a little bit weird how it does this, but what's gonna happen here is min, I wish I had a way of kind of explaining what's going on here. In the other class, I referred to some really cheap blinds that I used to have in my room as a kid. They were those opaque white blinds where basically what you do is you tug on the bottom of it to get it to roll up. And if you wanna pull it down, you just pull it down slowly. Or you could think of like the map sets in your classroom, back when they used to have map sets in classrooms. And basically, to pull it down, you just pull it down slowly. But to get it back up, you have to tug down and then it will roll back up, right? So it's almost like min, you come over here on the noon and you tug down on the foot and it rolls up, and it goes, and it rolls up into a ball, into the fetal position, and it hides. It hides into the next letter, which is a little bit weird, but that's what I see happening here. This may not help you at all, that's fine, ignore me. But it helps me remember what's going on, okay? So the noon has rolled up into the fetal position and it's hiding because it doesn't wanna get the virus, it's scared. And so, I'm gonna roll up here, and then you get your zavach, okay? So miz zavach. That's what's going on with the noon. We call this assimilation because the noon is assimilating into the next consonant. Now, it's not a great explanation because it doesn't really give you the sense that this is actually pretty normal even outside of Hebrew. So let me explain it this way. Another way to look at this is, think about English. English, we use the prefix in as a particle of negation. If we wanted to say that someone has an ability, or if we wanted to say that someone doesn't have an ability, we might say that they have an inability. If someone doesn't have, if something isn't appropriate, we might say that it is inappropriate, okay? We use this prefix in to negate something in English. If something is not sufficient, it would be insufficient, okay? But we also have an assimilation of this N letter in English. For example, if something is not legal, we don't say that it is illegal, we say that it is illegal. The N letter assimilates with the next letter. It transforms, it doubles that next letter, okay? If something is not measurable, we don't say that it is inmeasurable, we say that it is immeasurable, okay? So that the N letter assimilates with the next letter. If something is not responsible, we don't say it is inresponsible, we say that it is irresponsible. Again, assimilation here to the next letter. So this assimilation of the N letter happens in English as well. This isn't something crazy or unusual. What's actually going on here in Hebrew is the noon, because it's gonna get squished, it's got a consonant in front of it and a consonant behind it, however you think of it. It's got consonants surrounding, it got consonants surrounding it. It doesn't have its own vowel, so it's going to assimilate. So the first thing that it does is it assimilates into the next letter. This is a zion, so the noon becomes a zion, alright? Then we put the two words together. Miz zavach, we would end up with this, alright? And you might even write it like that. But when Hebrew has two identical consonants without a vowel between them, it has a tool to tidy things up a little bit, and that tool is the dogesh forte. And so we get miz dogesh, miz zavach, alright? So that's all that's happening here. The dogesh indicates a doubling. Now, to remember that this is a noon, you can think of it as the noon is curled up in the fetal position, hiding inside of the zion. Because this happens a lot with noon. It's not just with the min preposition. This is gonna happen in verbs with a noon, this is gonna happen all over the place.